Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education for Monday, April 25th, 2022. All notice of this meeting has been appropriately advertised. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Present.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mrs. Caden?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, there is no executive session at this time, so we are going to move into, we're going to combine Committee of the Whole and presentations this evening. So can I have a motion to enter Committee of the Whole?
I'll move.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we are going to use our Committee of the Whole time to, for Dr. McDowell to give his budget presentation, and then we can freely ask questions as, either as we go along or at the end, however he would like us to do it. He can let us know that part, but that kind of, we'll do both things at the same time. So, Dr. McDowell.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. First, before we get into the budget presentation, I just want to give kudos and appreciation for our Buildings and Grounds team. They were able to get the preschool playground project completed earlier than anticipated. Students were able to participate in the outdoor playground today. So we're very thankful for the leadership of Mr. Higginbotham, his team, and they worked throughout the spring break in order to make sure that when our children came back, they had a nice, new, and fun outdoor play space. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge that. Thank you, Keith. The title of our presentation this evening, there we go, is Accelerating Our Progress. There will be a reoccurring theme around this concept of acceleration, which we will explain throughout the presentation. We don't have a lot of slides. Some of them are going to be repetitive so that you can actually see the information presented in multiple forms, and we are open to your questions as they emerge. The culmination of this budget is based on a new process that we used this year, where we were aggressively seeking to make sure that we were taking into consideration the impact from the pandemic, but we were also empowering our schools to look at their student-specific needs and make more decisions in those processes, given we did not know what we did not know as it related with what students were going to need when they came back in September. So, we always start with our vision and our mission statement. Our vision is to develop lifelong learners by providing an inspiring and challenging education for every student, and our mission is by embracing the strengths inherent in a diverse student body, is to inspire confidence, critical thinking, creativity, and perseverance in every student. These are two of the guiding statements that were used in the development of this budget. So, our process looked a little different this year. In years past, there were decisions that were made more centrally, and fewer decisions were made at the local school level. Not casting any value judgment, not pros or cons, but we did know and we acknowledged through a series of leadership retreats with our principals, our directors, and our supervisors, that the needs of our students were going to require more sophisticated thought and more intentionality. So, we shifted our management model at the end of last year and carried that into the summer, and we are taking more of a site-based leadership approach. What this means is that the majority of the decisions, especially those day-to-day decisions, really should be made by those closest to the opportunity to support children, which is at the school level. So, the process for this year that we used was that schools were first asked to inform their specific school community, being transparent about how decisions would be made in the preparation of their budget. We asked schools to review their student data to be able to identify different bands of performance so that they would know what they were planning for in the future. We asked schools to work with their staff to draft a learning schedule to meet the specific needs of their students. We also asked for schools to be very mindful and intentional about making sure that you took an individual approach to your specific school's needs. We also asked for schools to consider their pain points. In years past, there were conversations about there were issues or concerns that weren't addressed, and what we asked for schools to consider is how do you begin to prioritize some of those pain points so that they're not pervasive or consistent challenges year after year, and then adjust your approach to how you're going to budget for future years accordingly. We also asked for schools to maximize the return on their investment during a thorough review of all of their programming, what works best, what needed to be improved, what needed to be shelved in order to make space for additional needs that may have emerged coming back from the pandemic. We also asked for schools to consider their accelerated learning strategy. All of our schools this year participated in a developmental process, and they created learning acceleration plans back in October. And what we asked for them to do was to align their budget requests for the 22, 23 school year to their acceleration strategy. We also asked for them to take a look at their discretionary spending, keeping in mind that the shutdown and that the pandemic were outliers, and that they needed to go back at least three years in order to look at what were some of the historical investments that they needed to take a look at to determine what future investments would be. And then ultimately, we asked for schools to maintain the DNA of their school, the life's blood, who you are, what you're about, what you value, but to be innovative, to think outside the box whenever possible. We are one of the districts within the region that is growing. So, we have continued to look at our year-after-year comparison, and we're seeing increases, positive increases across all grade bands. We saw an increase of 64 children in preschool, 38 K-5, 32 at the middle school level, and 35 at the high school level for a net increase of almost 170 new children for the 22, 23 school year. District revenue, I'm actually going to have our finance guru give you the breakdown of our district revenue. She'll be able to more eloquently describe and talk about what the numbers mean. Beth Ann?
Okay. Fund balance basically is our savings account that at the end of each year, we identify fund balance that's not spent that we can roll into the next year. So that's considered local income that we generate locally. Our local tax levy is going up 2%, 17.8 million. Tuition is a little over 6 million. Reserve withdrawal of 513,000, that's a capital reserve withdrawal. And capital reserve is one of those legal savings accounts that we set aside for capital projects. So we're doing some capital work this summer, so those funds are being withdrawn specifically for that purpose. Where it says activity, that's the monies we generate from the Chromebooks. The use of facilities, all of our miscellaneous accounts where we charge fees. State aid, we're now under 30%. When I started here about 15 years ago, we were about 34, 35%. So even though we got an increase in state aid, we are slightly, we're going down. So state aid's about 29%. Semi-Medicaid is a mandated state program where we have to participate. So children that receive extra OT, PT, and nursing services, if they're eligible for semi-Medicaid, we have to report them, and then we are reimbursed accordingly. And miscellaneous income is basically anything, anything that didn't fit the other category. So this is your interest income. If we get refunds from any vendors or rebates from being in the GIF, each year we get like money back from our GIFs. That money I set aside, and I put it right back in the following year's budget. So that is a quick down and dirty.
This is a graphic representation of what Beth Ann just shared, just to show the distribution of district revenue. The next line item is how are we appropriating our funds? How are we expounding those dollars? When you look at your breakdown, roughly 24-plus million is going towards instruction. That's roughly 65% of our total budget. 5.2 million in student services, which is almost 14% of our budget. 4.7 million in facilities, and 3.1 million in administrative costs for a grand total balancing out of $37,652,668. This is also a graphical representation of those, and what you will see is that the overwhelming majority of our resources are being spent directly supporting students and in the classroom. What's next is a year-over-year comparison, and I'm going to pitch it back over to Beth Ann.
So, with the taxes going up 349,000, that's a 2% increase. So for the average household in Collingswood, it's an increase of 80, $80. And if you include the debt that was previously approved in 2005 and then refinanced in 2011, it's about $83 total. And again, I just do the math because that's an average house. So if your house is 500,000, double it. If your house is less than 231, obviously it'll be less than that, but law of averages.
So how are we spending these resources? The district identified two key priorities for this year. District priority number one is supporting equity initiatives and learning acceleration year two. We want to ensure that we're using a lens of equity in order to meet the needs of every child. We asked every school to take a very personalized approach in how are you going to meet the growing needs of your students with an expectation that every student needed to be accelerated in order to account for the great disruption. But we also wanted to make sure that we were learning from the lessons from the pandemic to make sure that we were also flexible so that we could evolve based on the needs of our students. We also wanted to make sure that we were placing great emphasis on the expansion of professional learning communities. Professional learning communities are opportunities for our educators to be able to come together, to look at data, to plan instruction, to work collaboratively in order to provide more personalization and more data-driven decisions as it relates to what children need, when they need it, and at what scope is it going to be offered. We also wanted to make sure that as a professional learning organization, that we are making investments in high-quality professional development as well as ongoing coaching. In addition to making sure that we not only acknowledge, but we also position ourselves for the mandated curriculum shifts through the concept of interdisciplinary learning. We also wanted to reinforce our school support model. Academics, culture, and mental health, we know that these are areas of growth based on some of the needs that are being demonstrated in some of our schools. So we wanted to make sure that there was heavy emphasis placed on those supports. And then because we are an extremely diverse school community, we wanted to make sure that we began the initial steps in building our overall capacity to create a more inclusive learning model, specifically as it relates with our children that are coming in with pervasive gaps, as well as our students that have learning differences.
Dr. McDowell, can I stop here first?
Yes.
Could you explain two of those, just thinking about the layperson that might not fully understand the mandated, addressing the mandated curriculum shifts through interdisciplinary learning? Can you talk a little bit about what the mandated curriculum shifts, what that means, and then also what your vision is for building capacity for inclusive classrooms? Meaning they're not happening next year, correct?
Correct, correct. So I'll actually do the inclusive first, and then I will ask our chief academic officer to talk more about the curriculum shifts. In an environment where you have some children that have learning differences, when placing children in the least restrictive environment, that requires a different approach to instruction. Sometimes it looks like teen teaching, other times it looks like in-classroom support. But in order to be able to make those fundamental shifts, it requires that we invest. It also requires that we build capacity of our educators, and that we reposition the way in which we fund schools in order to do that. We cannot do that without our educators helping to actually develop what that transition will look like, and that transition will take multiple years because an inclusive model is a more costly model. So, in order for us to begin building capacity, we need to begin identifying what are the assets that we currently have, and then begin identifying a timeline. What scope and scale do we believe will move us closer to that goal of being in a more inclusive environment? So, we know that on the developmental scale, it will take multiple years, but we want to start having those conversations in 22, 23. We want to engage our educators, and we want them to be on the forefront of the development of what our model will look like with enough time over an extended period of years where we can actually implement it without getting caught in the invest and then disinvest or the cut in the takeaway process. So we want to be able to slowly embed it into our practices over an extended period of time. In terms of the mandated shifts, Jen, if you could share what some of those are, and then the concept around interdisciplinary learning?
I'm not a loud talker, I'm a soft talker. Good evening, everyone. The state of New Jersey has quite a few initiatives this year regarding standards development. There are quite a few content areas that have received updates, including world language, design thinking, computer science, social studies, health and physical education. There are several areas that will be worked on this summer in terms of curriculum development. Embedded in those are the concepts of using interdisciplinary approaches, and they are really kind of the catalyst for a lot of change in ensuring that the standards that we are implementing in our classroom are kind of offering a more well-rounded approach. So what we are looking toward are opportunities to see things like our science standards embedded into things like math for STEM, our technology standards embedded into things like math, and vice versa. World language, embedding social studies standards within our reading and writing context as well. So those are some shifts that we're looking forward to addressing in the coming year in particular.
So, we wanted to make sure that we were being mindful of eduspeak and educational jargon so that we were all on the same page. So the concept of educational equity. So, educational equity means that every child receives what they need in order to achieve their full academic and social potential so that they are able to thrive every single day. It's often confused with equality. Equality is where everybody gets the same thing. Equity means that some children get more, some children get less, and some children are able to maintain based on specific services. Liberation is a concept that we're not quite there yet, but liberation means that you remove any and all barriers that are preventing any child from being able to achieve their highest potential. Right now, we're in the phase of equity where we are looking at how we're funding schools, how we're developing programs, how we're looking at data, and making sure that we're not comparing students to students, but we're comparing with wherever a child happens to be with wherever the standard is, and making sure that we're filling in those gaps to ensure that every child is able to meet said standard. So this is one of the driving forces around the development of this year's budget. What is learning acceleration? Learning acceleration is a concept that we have been working on for the greater part of a year. In the simplest terms, our classroom educators, they design their instruction around the state standards as defined by the Department of Education. They regularly assess the progress of their students through multiple forms of assessment, and then to determine what level of understanding do our children have on those concepts, and what level of intervention is still needed. Our educators are also empowered to make decisions about the time and the frequency needed to address specific skills and topics in order to build our children's confidence so they have deep levels of understanding on said skills and concepts. So, every school back in October identified several strategies that they believe would help them move in this particular direction. And the reason why we say year two is because the Great Disruption was a two-year chaotic period of time where there were inconsistencies in terms of expectations, inconsistencies in terms of guidance, inconsistencies in terms of learning environment. And we know that in order to come out of that environment, we're looking at a three-to-five-year investment. So when we say year two, we're operating under the assumption that our children are going to need more time, but it's going to require us to be very intentional about what services we provide, which ones we do not provide, what levels of resources are provided to students, what level of coaching is afforded to our educators, and how are we prioritizing to make sure that each and every child is moving forward. So why is acceleration important? Assessments are a snapshot at a single moment in time. We don't want our students to be solely focused on the test, but we do want their skills to be transferable in an assessment environment. So we have been leveraging for the greater part of three years, visible learning, which is a research-based approach to how you accelerate your students. And the concept around visible learning is to develop characteristics that students will then be able to transfer into an assessment environment. So we're not teaching to the test. We're teaching and creating a learning environment that, when we get it right, will translate into higher levels of students' achievement in an assessment environment. So what this means is that every student in this new iteration will know their current level of understanding. They will understand where they're going and have confidence to take on those challenges. Students will be able to participate in the selection of tools to help guide their learning. Students will seek feedback and recognize errors, and that experimentation is part of the process. Students will develop skills so that they can monitor their own progress and adjust their learning, and then ultimately, students will be able to recognize their learning and be afforded opportunities to teach other students in the classroom. So we're repositioning ourselves so that students are able to pick up and adopt these types of characteristics, which we believe will help to accelerate our students much faster. So how are we investing in that first priority of supporting equity initiatives and learning acceleration? We're increasing staff and programs to support social, emotional health, and wellbeing, as well as reinforcing our multi-tiered system of support. So what does that mean? This means that we are adding an additional social worker, a lead nurse, a behavioral specialist, instructional coaches, in order to reinforce that intervention model in the classroom to be able to help our students get to those deeper levels of learning. We're also developing classroom educator tools, programs, and resources that support this process. We're providing additional funding to support department and grade-level instructional planning and educator collaboration. We're providing additional funding to reinforce learning acceleration. We're providing funding to address the essential curriculum changes that you heard our chief academic officer speak about previously. We're also providing additional funding to reinforce positive culture in schools that promotes inclusive practices and that ultimately minimize classroom disruptions. And then, in addition, we're providing additional funding to expand access to full-day preschool for our students with learning differences. District priority number two is supporting our infrastructure. We are a district that has well-maintained but aging facilities. Our youngest facility, and Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, is about 60 or 70 years young. That's our youngest facility. Our Buildings and Grounds seem to do a phenomenal job of maintaining our buildings, but that only comes through continued investment, continued ongoing maintenance so that we don't have deferred problems that emerge. So, in addition to supporting of our infrastructure, we're also providing additional space for displaced staff and addressing some of the fragmented offices that are housed in buildings across our district. We're trying to recapture educational spaces in schools to address some of the crowding concerns. As we continue to grow within our district, space is going to continue to be at a premium. So we are going to have to constantly revisit how we're utilizing our facilities to be more efficient in the use of that space so that our children receive the full benefit of our facilities. We're also looking to reinforce technology through the acquisition of equipment, investments in infrastructure, and then ongoing classroom-level support. And then, your annual facilities upgrades and improvements, we're going to continue to invest in those. So what do those investments look like? One of the investments that we're excited about for some of our student athletes is a new mobile press box in order to support scholastic competition. We're prioritizing infrastructure and facilities as part of our overarching strategic planning, which is actively in progress. Continued investment in annual building maintenance on each campus. Investment in equipment to support enhanced school safety and security. Continued investment in our one-to-one computing initiative to make sure the students have access to 21st century tools. In addition to continued investment in anywhere, anytime learning. There were many positives that we were able to learn from the pandemic, and we're going to continue to grow based on what we've learned, which is to provide our students opportunities to not just learn within the constraints of the four walls of their classroom, but for us to think about what are other ways that we can engage our students, and what tools do they need for that engagement to be fluid and continual. In addition to continued investment in cybersecurity and internet safety for students and staff, as well as continued investment in website development and overall communication support.
Can you just say a little bit about what process might be used around the recapturing educational spaces, and will those be campus-led? Will campuses be involved in that process?
Yes, well, I mean, well, every campus, in the grand scheme of things, they want classrooms to be converted back to classrooms. So they're looking to evict as many individuals as possible. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to rethink building utilization. We're doing that in direct partnership with the administrative teams on each campus based on need. So we're looking at the enrollment patterns. So, for example, we knew that we needed an additional preschool disabled class. So we had to move some individuals around, and we had to make space because there were very specific constraints about how that class needs to operate. And the goal for the creation of that class was to make sure that we had an inclusive model among our preschoolers so that students were able to work together and receive that same level of benefit. But that did require us to make a fundamental shift in one of our schools in order to make that space available. We're also looking at things like how do we share offices in order to reduce the footprint, and ultimately, the impact that that's having, especially in buildings that are seeing growth. And then we're also seeking to be able to be more efficient in the scope of what we're offering so that we're better utilizing our classrooms, and we're maxing out the use of each said space so that we don't have individuals having to bounce around or travel. But that's in direct partnership with our school leaders on each campus. So, how are we making sure that we are being efficient and mindful of the fiscal environment to be able to do more with less? So, we are participating in insurance funds, and in those joint insurance funds, we're getting the best rates that we can because we have collective buying power, which allows us to keep our premiums low so that we can then add those additional revenues back into the classrooms. We also are seeking savings on our utilities by participating in a consortium to reduce our overarching utilities costs. We're participating in co-op whenever possible so that when we're purchasing supplies, we're also seeing savings there. One of the strongest drivers of our cost-saving measures are the shared service agreements that we have with Oakland and Woodland in the areas of administration, business services, child study, custodial and maintenance, and technology, as well as athletics. This is allowing us to maximize those dollars, and then the remaining funds put those back into student services and classroom instruction. In addition to as-needed shared services with other Camden County schools- In addition to as-needed shared services with other Camden County school systems in the areas of maintenance and technology, that's creating a modest level of revenue that we're then putting back into building maintenance, putting back into additional staff to be able to provide levels of service and support here in Collingswood. In addition to transportation, the use of a district bus for our vocational program, as well as classroom trips with our partner district Oakland. And then trash removal with our partnership with Oakland Public Works. And then ultimately, through our programming, by offering early childhood education, it helps to strengthen our end-district programs, so we're able to better utilize the resources that we have because more students are receiving the benefit, especially in areas of mental health and then early intervention. And questions?
I have a question, and I was waiting until the end in case I ended up with more than one, so this is from like ten slides ago. It was around the increase in enrollment. I was wondering if that factored in any bounce back from losses in enrollment miss-pandemic? If you don't know the answer to that right now, that's fine. I was just curious because I think I remember we lost some students. Okay. Yeah. So even with the twenty, obviously, we're still up from the last two years, even post-pandemic in enrollment. Okay. Just curiosity, not really a big deal, but the other other point I wanted to make is more of just some random feedback that I got that I thought you would be interested in hearing. So I sat in a closed group meeting with the Philadelphia Board of Education or Philadelphia School District Chief of Finance CFO, Chief Financial Officer. Won't get into the context of that because it's not relevant, but in my questioning and trying to understand their budget and some questions around equity and autonomy at the school building level, I kind of gave context around being on the board of that here and our transition to zero-based budgeting, which is clear that's not what they're doing. Not sure what they call what they're doing, I think it's a hybrid. But I didn't want to share that. When I shared that, he was extremely impressed and wanted to vocalize in the middle of this meeting that zero-based budgeting would be ideal even in his district should it be doable, and that he was really impressed with our transition after so many years to zero-based budgeting, that it's not easy and it's not an easy transition. So I just wanted to give kudos to you guys for that because obviously, he knows way more than I do about how hard that is, so I figured I'd share that.
Thank you. Ari is a financial genius. He and I worked together for one year to, you know, he was just coming in and I was was on my way out. You know, just anecdotal, the challenge in a district the size of Philadelphia is that their budget is roughly $3.1 billion. They have 202 buildings, and the level of sophistication needed to do zero-based budgeting requires a very personal approach. We built capacity here in Collingswood over a series of about six months of working with our principals. Because of our size, we're actually able to have very granular conversations, which was helpful in the recommendations that came from the school level. But we but we love positive feedback. Thank you.
I had a question, well, two, and I held them too, sorry. So the first was, I'm not sure if there's a direct answer to this, but way back in the beginning, when you were talking about kind of like what went into this budget, what what was missing from that, and I think it was implied, but there wasn't mentioned student input, like there was no nothing up there that said anything about like how students were going to be driving where we were going. I know it is because we talked about it, but I just wondered how that translates, if I'm making sense.
Great question. So at the middle and the high school level, there's more capacity for students to participate in that process. So at the beginning of this year, we asked the middle and the high school to survey students, to find out what students were interested in, use that in the development of their program of study, in the development of their extracurricular activities, in the development of their targeted intervention plans, as well as their learning acceleration plan that was submitted back in October. So the recommendations that were put forward from the middle and the high school referenced the data that was collected from students and then those ongoing conversations that have been had with some of the student groups on each of those campuses in the recommendations that they put forward for their budgets. Difficult to have that sophisticated conversation with second graders. We did ask in our focus groups at every elementary about what were the things that students were really interested in. They were interested in things like extracurricular, they were interested in being able to go outside, being able to have access to more non-traditional academic courses like art, music, physical education, and then more opportunities for experiential learning. Students wanted to get off off-campus. So we had focus groups at the elementary level, specifically with our third, fourth, and fifth graders, and that feedback was also taken into consideration.
And I just have one other question that is around district priority number one. Again, I don't know if there's an answer for this right now, but where it says we're working to ensure that we meet the needs of every learner through the lens of equity, I feel like there's so much in that statement to kind of unpack and and make sure that we're actually doing. So we're being mindful of accountability metrics of measure so that we're making sure that we're actually doing that. Because I just feel like there's there's so much and it's such an important thing that we need to be doing. So not that I'm saying that we need to give teachers extra work to do or anything like that, I'm just saying, are we being mindful of that? How are we measuring that?
So equity is often, it's hard to measure upfront. We start with the lens of how are we actually funding our programs? And then, once we actually have those programs that are funded, then we begin to start disaggregating the data in the implementation of those programs to make sure that that lens is still being utilized and that we are holding ourselves accountable at each level to make sure that we are not having children fall between the cracks. So I would say that at its most basic level, it's are we at least investing in a more equitable environment? And then are we now assigning targets and goals in order to make sure that every child is actually moving forward? That's going to be an ongoing process. We're still very much in that developmental phase, but our goal was to make sure that we at least invested in those equitable processes upfront. We have what's called a continuous improvement guide process at every school level where we're disaggregating data and we're looking at data. We did a modified continuous improvement planning process this year because we knew that coming back from from hybrid learning, we couldn't go all in. So we introduced the concept around continuous learning, around disaggregation of data, around looking at specific groups of children and providing targeted levels of support to those children. We will continue to build on that for 22, 23.
A couple of, it's probably forever ago now, there was an enrollment study done projecting out, and I was wondering if our enrollment growth was in line with what that study had projected?
No. And it's simplest right now. We we looked at this, I guess, after Dr. McDowell came here, and it looked like what was happening in Collingswood is not what the report was showing, specifically in some of our our schools, because I remember it was a school-by-school report, some of our schools were at capacity and that was not predicted at all. So in a nutshell, no. So what I did is I kind of went back over the last five years, because the DOE automatically looks at our enrollments because we transmit them often, and they do like a growth growth chart slash growth projection for us. So I use that same basically number that the DOE's been using, and I just put it out in another couple of years to get the projection.
My other question was, I know that the borough had reached out like a while ago when they had announced that they were looking at having more apartments coming in, and in terms of enrollment, right, we're at capacity. I was just curious if the borough had any more communications about potential development in the in the borough that could impact our school enrollments down the line?
The only one I know of is the bank building off Haddon Avenue. I know that one site that's being developed, that's the only one I know of.
The one that the one that was approved is, I believe it's 133 units. That one was approved. It will affect enrollment probably two or three years from now. We don't know what that impact will be yet.
I have a quick question. So I was just thinking about it today, the stadium that got taken down and like the kind of like I hoping temporary bleachers that are up there, is there something in the budget that's happening in the next upcoming years to have a better stadium slash bleacher situation?
Stadium, no. Bleachers, no. That's going to be part of the discussion with the strategic planning. That's actually one of the groups that's going to be broken off. Myself and Mr. Higginbotham are chairing that subcommittee for facilities to kind of look the next couple of years out to see obviously what we need, and obviously, that's always number one. We have to, we have to address that condition behind the high school. But what we can fit in this year's budget is a press box that either way, whatever happens in the next few years in Collingswood, let's say, you know, if we do do, you know, pass and we get a new new stadium, that press box is going to be moved to the visitor's side. So we're investing in things that we can easily continue to use and we're not, you know, going to throw the money away. But the stuff you're talking about is not, it won't fit in our local budget within the 2% that I'm allowed to raise taxes by, so we got to pick and choose our projects that make it a little bit better, but you know, I can address with what I can pay for.
Bleachers that we have now, is that what's going to be at graduation?
Looking at Keith. Yes. And we usually put the white chairs out too, right?
I had a question about the the site-based piece, just to clarify, because I know there's there is some concern that when you talk about site-based, it's like, it's very isolated site-based, you know, people are working by themselves. And from my understanding, conversations with you is that, no, no, when we talk about site-based, it's not that these schools are working in isolation, but they are working together with you and with other schools. But but like the principals are working as their school leaders, but with other school leaders and with the districts to to plan out what's going on in the coordinate together, correct?
Right. So at its most basic form, it really starts at the specific school level. We want our school administrators to work with their staff first. School staff are best positioned to identify what their instructional priorities should be, what levels of support should be, because they they know the kids. Our elementary, so we have divided our administrative teams up into an elementary and a secondary. So all of our elementary leaders in Collingswood and Oakland, they work collaboratively together. They share best practice, they bounce around ideas. Some things they're able to come to consensus, some things they don't, because the needs for each of their schools may be much further apart. At the secondary level, our middle and our high school teams, they work collaboratively. That's a a large group of administrators. So they're not doing it in isolation, but it's always in partnership with school-based staff as well as our district staff. So from a district perspective, we provide technical assistance in terms of what are the conditions in which they need to operate, but in terms of the meat, the actual getting granular in the details, that is is being pushed down to the school level for them to make more decisions.
And so would it be correct to say, when you when you say site-based, it it means including the the entire staff in the process as opposed to site-based doesn't mean the principal is making all of the calls, it's encouraging the principal and the entire school, community, teachers, staff, everyone to to be working together to make those decisions, right? That's that's the difference.
Correct. Ultimately, the principals are the ones who are directly accountable, but best practice dictates that they work collaboratively with their staff in order to co-construe what their plan needs to look like.
I actually want to add to a question brought up previously about equity. I'm actually really glad to see equity emphasized in the context of the budget because at the end of the day, money talks, right? So I thought that was great. But just as I'm processing the question and answer, and I know we've had these conversations before as groups and committees, but I figure why not mention it in a public meeting just to kind of keep that conversation going as well and maybe for an update on this, but it it is really hard to hold ourselves accountable for something so abstract sometimes, and I understand that. But going back to data and kind of understanding graduation rates broken by the demographics, suspension rates, IEP broken down in in subgroups, whatever supports IEPs, 504s, whatever the case may be, any interventions breaking those down by subgroups of demographics and understanding where we were pre-pandemic, where we are post, and then maybe in another year or two after some of these things have been implemented, where we are. So at least we could share with the public and the board a baseline of that collective information over the last couple of years is probably the best way to hold us accountable. Would that, is that possible without getting too small detailed and kind of exposing identities or hinting at too small, because I know we can't do that. But looking at those patterns, I think is the best way to hold us accountable.
One of the largest hurdles is the the access to tangible normed data. Because we have not had consistent state assessments, it's very difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison because the last tangible dataset that we had was from 2018, 19. We will be assessing children this year, and what we're expecting is to see, in a best-case scenario, that we will not have lost much ground, but we fully anticipate to have lost some ground in terms of growth, maybe not in terms of proficiency, but in terms of growth. We won't have baseline data to compare it to until this time next year, where we have been able to look at the assessment data that we should be receiving probably late September, early October, in order to gauge where we were. We'll be able to compare that somewhat to the Start Strong data. Start Strong data looked at the previous year, didn't look at current state-level standards or state-level proficiency. We will then be able to potentially triangulate where we are, but we're still about a year and a half to two years away from being able to to really track and know are the interventions that we're putting in place right now, at what level of success are we actually seeing?
Well, that's what I'm I'm saying, so we won't know the impact right away, but we can at least know where we're starting from and and kind of shed light on that. And also, the data you just spoke of is more just academic focus, which obviously is our biggest goal and the most important goal, but we spoke about social, emotional, we spoke about, I'm just wondering, is your data around the students that get counseling support, again, going back to the 504s and IEPs, anything of that sort, any any intervention? Like, can we also include that in that baseline and and look at that by demographics?
Yeah, I think that's perfectly reasonable. I I just want to make sure that we're we're cautioning our or tempering our expectations because a lot of the supports that we're putting in place are in direct response to things that we're still finding out about from the pandemic. So it's great that we have some students that are receiving services now, but we have to have better identification systems to make sure that the students that we've missed are actually receiving those services before we can actually understand the scope of what we're providing and how well it's doing or or not doing. Also, we weren't collecting data about social, emotional learning and and mental health concerns pre-pandemic, so we're really starting from scratch, and some of the assess- So we're really starting from scratch and some of the assessments of, of how you actually get to baseline, we're still, we're still trying to work through to figure out what, what does that look like?
Well, then I guess we're out of space where we need to be really intentional about creating that baseline in the next 12, 18 months, because if not, we're going to keep, it's going to be a downward effect that never ends, it sounds like.
Well, we, we, we want to use the strategic planning in order to identify what metrics. So I'm hoping that we will have identified those goals and those metrics by July.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to add, like, add, there's, I mean, there's, outside of academics, right, there's, there's discipline reports, discipline outcomes, like how many kids, who and what kids are being reported to building administrators, which ones are getting suspended, which ones are getting detentions, AP and honors class enrollments. Like, I think a lot of those things are things that we could be looking at right now, just to have an understanding of what the disparities and what, what do, what does and does not exist.
That's a health factor.
Right.
Well, and I think all of this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I know we've all had this conversation in different iterations, Siri, as you said before, that we're hoping that this begins the baseline of using data going forward with all, with this new budget, right, to, to measure a lot of those things, measure or just track progress. Because so, so much has been, so much has changed since in the past few years. So now we're starting, like you said, from, from this new baseline. And I think we're all trying to just ensure that that is actually going to be paid attention to and discussed and that sort of thing moving forward. Am I right there?
Yeah. And I, I will add that, like, I understand that part of what Dr. McDowell is doing is actually setting up processes that then exist, right? Which is why I'm coming back to the conversation, like, where are we on this? Because I know that, that was lacking in the past. So not just because of the pandemic, but just, just historically not tracking or, or using data has led to kind of like that routine of not referring back to things or not having certain reports to use. So again, bringing it back to now that the budget has shifted and we're doing this new process, where does that fall into it? Just because I didn't see that referenced here. But yeah, we, we definitely have made progress in, in like, I think the implementation of planning to use data moving forward. So now it's like the next step.
Any other questions or comments budget related from board members?
Reagan, yeah, just, this is a different subject. Is it possible for us to go back to in-person committee meetings?
Um, we can, yeah. We can, we can talk about that, yeah. If, or, and even different committees can make different choices about whether they'd rather go in person or not too. So yeah, that's something that, I'm assuming you're speaking for yourself, right, so the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee could, could talk about whether they would be okay with going back in person.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was going to jump in and, about the topic that Siri brought up. And I, I would encourage, I guess, the, the sharing of the baseline data now, understanding, of course, the impact and, and changes we wouldn't be able to observe until later on, right? But the pieces about demographic breakdowns of, of suspensions and, and response to disciplinary reports and in terms of enrollment AP classes, honors classes, gifted and talented programs, how we're doing demographically in those areas, I think it'll be helpful for us to see where we're at now so that we can, as a board, understand where we can try to help push our priorities if, you know, to, to help with equity going into the, the future. I, I personally feel kind of like I'm flying, blind sometimes, because, you know, the, the state report only shares so much breakdown of certain things that, you know, I think the district can, I would imagine has capacity to, to share more so that we can really make sure that, that what we're doing and what we're putting forth is moving us towards a more equitable situation.
I would just like to add that with, you know, the data is certainly important, but it's more important that it's interpreted through the school teams so that the school teams are, you know, you can't say check, we've achieved equity or check equity, or check, we've achieved student achievement or student growth. So it's up to our school teams to set the parameters of what, what characteristics represent equity or growth and with the data. Because I think you could pretend to prove anything with data, you know? I think it's up to our school teams to interpret that data and set the characteristics of what achievement is or equity. So, you know, I don't think just the board being presented with numbers is going to be enough. It's going to be reliant on the professionals in our buildings to set those measures for us and make it more individual, you know, for, for each school, for each, for the district, the schools, and even down to each student.
I, I, I do agree with that, but I think it's also important for us to be looking at some of this information because I, I, I mean, I've had conversations with folks that they didn't realize that there was a huge disparity between graduation rates between people of color and, you know, not people of color in, in district, right? So like, people look at things differently depending on, you know, what macro, micro level they're looking at things. So I, I think it's, it's important to have both of those conversations at the same time. And, and that's like across the board, right? Like even into hiring, what, what is our student population and is that even remotely closely represented in our teaching population? I, I forget what the numbers are, but it's like 85% of kids in the state of New Jersey of color will never have a teacher that looks like them. And, and so those, that data, when we look at it, can guide whether or not are our higher practices skipping people out by accident? Or what, you know, where are we recruiting from? I, I, I think we have to have that benchmark. And then I think that information absolutely needs to be discussed even down through the administrative levels of the teaching.
And I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, because I did zone out a little bit at the end of the last strategic planning meeting, but I, that, this is one of the categories where there will be a committee to, like, you kind of just said this a minute ago, but I wanted to reiterate it, to, to create some of these, these metrics to look at. And, and perhaps some board members can join those committees and, and help to create whatever those metrics will be.
Are you talking about for the strategic planning? Okay. Just making sure, because, I mean-
So I can send out an email and you guys can join another committee?
This is an opportune time then for this conversation-
Right.
Because we can't strategic plan without knowing our baseline for all these things. We can't do it. And so I, I definitely get the school, the implementation from the, the school communities, but I just, it, it's evident that this hasn't been used to this extent at any level because we don't have access to it yet. So I think is understanding how we get access and build systems first, and maybe that's something to do over the summer, because obviously people have day jobs that they're doing right now. So I think, I just wanted to throw in there, like, this is not an overnight request. I don't think that any of, any of us anticipate that this will be done in the next 14 days. But yeah, opportune time, considering we're doing strategic planning, maybe we can set a timeline to check in as a full board and not just a few people in the strategic planning process going into the summer or going into the next school year. Because I think that's more realistic than just kind of having a, another very robust conversation around this, but not particularly setting a timeline is where we've gotten stuck for.
So the good news is we do have a timeline for the strategic plan part of it, right? That there, the, the committees will be meeting-
Next two weeks?
Yeah, the next two weeks. And then-
The next four to six weeks.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was, in the next two weeks they're starting to, to meet. Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Okay. And then a, a full presentation to all of us will happen in June about the strategic plans. So that's kind of perfect timing for us to then think about, you know, obviously digesting all of that information and then maybe coming together. You know, we don't have a scheduled meeting in June, or excuse me, in July, thinking about coming together in some way to look through all of the, the information for the strategic plan and the, the data that, you know, we want to use to inform our next steps. Does that kind of make sense? Because I agree with you, Siri, I think talking about this over and over again, we always have very good discussions about it, but then it doesn't go anywhere. And so I want to make sure it goes somewhere.
And also, I understand that we're not going to check that application out.
Right. That he's in, you know, by next week, we have an entire database, right?
I know. It's just when it's, like, a lot of weeks, it's, it's, so I appreciate that. Like, I-
On that note, does anyone else? Okay. Can I have a motion to come out of committee of the whole, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information, just drawing your attention to some individual elementary school activities that are happening. There's, and then next, yep, next Wednesday is early dismissal for staff professional development for everyone. And then the 17th of May is our next board meeting. Moving on to section six.
I'm sorry, Reagan, the 17th of May on Tuesday, I don't think is the Collinswood Board meeting. I think that's the Oakland Board meeting.
That, well, it's definitely not Tuesday, that's correct. Maybe it's not the 17th. It's the 16th. You're right. Good catch. So May 16th is our Collinswood Board meeting at 6:30. Section six, routine board business. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 28th, 2022 regular board meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there's no unfinished business at this time, so moving on to section seven, public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts, that all attempts to, to resolve concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The attentive, of the intent of public comment is to give the community an opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. If someone would like to make a public comment, please stand, state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Hi, Jennifer Huang, 741 Park Avenue. I'm here tonight listening to the budget, reflecting on last month's board meeting and looking for the connections between the two. And I think I want to offer up that the district's emphasis, looking at inclusivity in classrooms, the lens of equity, thinking about professional learning communities and coaching and professional development are all really important things that I am delighted to see highlighted in the plan. I also want to come back to some of the key points that were brought up about transparency and looking for pain points and learning from the experiences that we've had to move into the future. And then listening to the discussion among the board members, there are a few things that have been pulled out. You know, the meeting, last month's board meeting looks really different from this month's board meeting. And I think it's really important to remember that the passion that the students and the teachers and the administrators that are bringing to this space is around issues of value in education, transparency, and how do we move forward? I hear a couple of things. I hear Ms. Rivera talking about data and dashboards and understanding where we are and where we're going. And that seems like a really important thing to focus on. I recognize we don't have all the data. I recognize that we are generating the data and we are looking for the best tools to generate the data. But if we don't benchmark those things and publicly talk about them, what the priorities are for having teachers and students be connected, we are not going to be able to move this forward. And I think your persistence around that is huge, so thank you. And I think we do have some measures that we can look at now, we just don't have all of them. So we should highlight the ones that are out there. And in the works of your committee, I, committees, I would emphasize, let's think about what tools do we already have and where are we going? I think in terms of transparency, one of the things we realized last month is that there was not, whether there was an intention of transparency, which I think there was, there was not a condition of transparency. And the motion in this room talked about that. I think if we asked the students at the middle school and high school if they felt like their input was taken into account for budgeting, they would say no. I think they came here last month to tell you what their opinion was because they were passionate. I would really like the board and at the individual school levels as we think about how new processes work, to think about how we make that transparent, how we hear student input from the students, where the students are reporting out, where we hear teacher input from the teachers and the teachers are reporting out. I recognize that's not in the context of a board meeting, but I think the voice of students and teachers last month feeling not heard and then having what they, what they thought distilled and misinterpreted is the message I have gotten over and over again, listening to my kids, listening to their friends, talking to their teachers. And so those points of transparency and looking at what has caused us pain in the past and how we fix it moving forward are the things that I hope Dr. McDowell and the board is taking away from this, so we just do this better. Thank you.
Okay, it doesn't look like anyone else is going to stand up. So I do want to make one correction because the, going back to section five, future dates and miscellaneous, I apologize again. The, the board meeting in May is May 23rd. That's right, May 23rd? Okay. So sorry, sorry about that, folks. Monday, May 23rd, 6:30, and it is in the Zane North All Purpose Room?
Yes, I know you asked that question.
Yep. As of now, it is in the Zane North All Purpose Room. Okay. And any change in venue will be communicated out to the public. Okay. Moving on to section eight, the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell.
Okay. Section 8.01, enrollment for March of 2021 was 2208. Enrollment as of March 2022 was 2246. And the reports are attached. 8.02, school safety drill report for the month of March is also attached. 8.03, there is no suspension report being presented. And 8.04, the HIB or the anti-bullying report for April is attached and being presented.
Is, is there no suspension report being presented because there were no suspensions? Is that?
That would be my assumption. I can go back and check with the school. I know that they had some challenges. I don't know if they resulted directly in suspensions. I didn't see any suspension paperwork come across my desk. I will go back and, and double check.
Section nine, our student reports.
So for academics, some of our seniors got chosen for the Camden County Best of Class. Congrats to Jonah Taylor in Most Schools Period, Josely Flores Bravo, Most Courageous, Mary Osilia, Community Service, Megan Maraglia, Leadership, Phoebe Burkhart, Performing Arts, Javon Daniels, Most Improved, and Ava Ostrom, Best Overall. We have had some more seniors accepted into college. Luke Plots, Community College of Philadelphia, Kanaya Graves, Rutgers University, William Patterson University, Stockton University, and Rowan University, Tassia Taran, Rutgers University, and Rowan University, Dushay Carroll, Thomas Jefferson University, Corbin Roth, Quinnipiac University, Owen Ray, Syracuse University, and Ava Ostrom, Vanderbilt University.
And then for our athletics, our softball team has a record of two and eight and had an exciting win today against Overbrook with a score of 10 to 7. Our coach is sitting right there. Senior Kelly McGeehan and junior Lily Badaloni had amazing hits that were crucial to our win. Baseball has a record of two and five currently, and their next upcoming game is on Wednesday at home. Boys tennis had a great match against Haddon Heights with a 4-1 win. Senior Josiah Anger, DJ Rudio, and Owen Strom, and Topher Abican, along with sophomore Micah Anger, all won their matches. Boys spring- sophomore Micah Anger, all won their matches. Boys spring track beat West Stepford over break with a score of 68 to 55. They placed fourth in the SMR and fifth in the 4x4 with junior Ian Stidle, Isaiah Pepe, and Elijah Ferguson running. The girls track placed fourth at Woodbury Relays over break with junior Mia McConnell, junior Kendall Bell, freshman Gabby Verdone, and senior Mia Gugliotta running. Lacrosse had a 13 to 4 win against Timber Creek on April 11th. Freshman Peyton Ryan scored four goals. Senior Emmy Waldron scored three goals with one assist. Senior Maya Van Laar scored one goal. Freshman Riley McSweeney scored two goals and had one assist. And junior Sedona Hackelgarenstein scored one goal. And senior Maddie Ikey scored one goal with one assist. And junior Sophie Draper had 13 saves in the net. That's impressive.
For extracurriculars, the student council put together a senior citizens prom at the community center on Thursday, March 31st, for all of the senior citizens from Collinswood, Oakland, and Woodland. Junior Emalia Messick put together a CHS Broadway night this past month. Our CHS indoor marching band and color guard will also be competing in a competition at Wildwood this weekend. It's very fun.
Thank you very much. I'm impressed that you played the game, came back, wrote up all the highlights, and then read all of this. That is, that is very impressive. So thank you both very much.
Reagan, before we move on, just wanted to add, because I think it would fit in here with student activities, and thank you both for the report. On Friday, the boys varsity team led a clinic for kids in town for a couple of hours. There's about 70 kids that came out, got to see the high school players, and they got taught by them. So I want to thank Coach Klein and everybody there on the staff and all the kids that did that. It was a great thing, so shout them out.
That's great. Thank you, everyone. All right. So as always, you're more than welcome to stay, but also we understand that you have other things to do. Section 10, our board, Business Administrator Board Secretary Report, Ms. Coleman.
All right. This evening, I have attached your March monthly budget transfers, your March 2022 secretary treasures reports and cash reports, and all the financial statements and their related backups. Student activities report for the, the month of March is also attached. The Nutriserve, Nutriserve Food Service Financial Statement is attached for the month of March, and the listing of the April purchase orders that have been issued, and a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning are attached for your review and approval. And just an FYI, we just got notice, lucky us, that we got selected by the state for a, a federal procurement review of our food service operation. They do it like every three to five years. They did Collinswood exactly five years ago, so we're, they're right on time. So-
Good news for you.
More, more to come, yes. I'll keep you guys posted.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Section 11, Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee, Mr. Craig.
Thank you. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. Committee also reviews and approves all contracts, the outside service providers, and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. So a few things up today. 11:02 to 11:09 is the Board Secretaries' Report, just presented. 11:10 is a revision to the Building Capacity Grant, which is focused on STEM equipment, professional development, supply purchases. 11:11 is authorizing the submission and then the approval for the part of the ARP, Homeless Children and Youth, application for fiscal year 2022. 11:12 and 11:13 are separate agreements with service providers to help find paraprofessionals and teacher assistants, which continues to be an ongoing challenge, not just here in Collinswood, across the state. So, again, it seems to be every month, we've got a different provider that we're working with to try to help us find good people and capacity, and build our capacity. 11:14 is approving the Food Service Management Contract with Nutriserve at the rate of $54,675.12 for the following school year. 11:15, again, is approving contract with ESS Support Services for various staffing on an as-needed basis. 11:16 is adoption of a Claims Act Form, a resolution which allows us to adopt forms in case there are, if we are sued as the board, yeah. Fun, excited. Don't have to read the resolution, do I?
No, you don't.
No, you don't want to hear me read it? Okay, thank you. 11:17 is approving the budget that was presented today for the 2022-2023 school year. 11:18 is approving a new after-school program provider, Healthy Kids, which will also do before care as well. Correct? Before and after. And then 11:19 through 11:22 are use of facility, use of facility requests for various groups in Collinswood, such as the youth theater, recreation art program, boys basketball, and the community chorus. So we're seeking approval for items 11:02 to 11:22.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Oh, she stepped out. Totally not even like, I don't have my glasses on, sorry. Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except item 1117 where I vote no.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Moving on to section 12, Curriculum Committee, Ms. Henry.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instructions, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Items 12.02 through 12.04 are our elementary, middle school, and high school field trips. Item 12.05 is our home instruction and out-of-district placements. Item 12.07 is approval for a foreign exchange student at the high school level to attend the 2223 school year. Item 12.08 is revisions to this year's school calendar, and 12.09 seeks approval for next year's school calendar. So the board, the committee recommends approval for items 12.01 through 12.09.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I do have a question about next year's calendar. In terms of the professional learning days, I don't know if it's been decided yet or not, but can you share what those days will be used for and the topics that are, I guess, being worked on, on those days for the school staff?
So that's, that's still being, still being worked through. We, we're seeking approval for the time, but in terms of the content, we don't have anything to report today.
Gotcha, yeah. I was just wondering, because I had some parents reach out, just wondering, you know, exactly how those days were used for, for, for teachers. So, just interested. I, I understand that you don't have that out right now, but definitely would be interested to, to understand, you know, all the good stuff that happens when it's ready. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Moving on to section 13, the Personnel Committee. Ms. Sheridan Celia apologizes for not being able to be here today, so I will take over, bear with me, this is a very long agenda. The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Items 13.02 and 13.03 are both resignations. Item 13.04 is issuing, is move on the recommendation to issue a contract to, to a middle school secretary. Items 13.05 to 13.08 are long, are either high school, middle school, or elementary school, long-term sub-replacement teachers. Items 13.09 is a, a New Jersey FLA request. Items 13.10 and 13.11 are revised contracts. 13.12 is approving all special education teachers to provide compensatory education services for the 2021, 22, and 2223 school years at a rate of $35 per hour on an as-needed basis. 13.13 is approving a revision for district teachers to work after school. What does the SAP stand for again?
School Acceleration Program.
Thank you, sorry, my brain. School Acceleration Program through the ESAR grants. Items 13.14 through 13.16 are tenured and non-tenured preschool through grade five administrative staff. Nope, not just element, they're administrative staff, sorry, tenured and non-tenured administrative staff for preschool through high school. Items 13.17 and 13.18 are tenured and non-tenured high school and district administrative staff. So I did get that a little bit wrong, but I feel like you guys are with me. 13.19 and 13.20 are tenured and non-tenured preschool through grade five faculty members. Items 13.21 and 13.22 are tenured and non-tenured grade six through grade eight faculty members. 13.23 to 13.24 are tenured and non-tenured dis, high school and district faculty. And then, I told you this is very long. 13.25 through 13.33 are tenured and non-tenured office staff and service personnel for all three, preschool through high school. And then, we get to, 13.34 is issuing the contract to Ms. McPartland as our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, as approved by the Executive County Superintendent effective July 1st. 13.35 and 13.36 are summer hours for our secretaries at the elementary and high school. 13.37 is a student-teacher practicum placement at Tatum. 13.38 is the approval of the 2022 to 2025 agreement between the Collinswood Board of Education and the Collinswood Building Services Employees Association. And 13.39 is wishing, wishing to recognize the loyalty and service of retiring employees with a tangible proof of appreciation. The board directs the superintendent to procure appropriate awards within a reasonable cost to the following employees who have retired this year. Ronald Hamrick, Tom Santo, Denise Seletti, Joanne McDaniel, Stephen Miller, Darren Prince, Thomas Re, I want to make sure, Ray, thank you, Tom Ray, and James Steinhagen. We appreciate their service. And there's two more on the next line. And Dawn Rice and Rosa Ruiz, my apologies. 13.40 are a list of substitutes and tutors, and there is no expense form at this time, so looking for approval of items 13.02 to 13.40. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. I'm looking at section 14, Policy and Regulations Committee. There's, there's nothing there, so we're just going to keep on moving. Section 15, Miscellaneous, there is a, there is not a HIB report from last month, but 15.02, there are some job descriptions for a learning acceleration teacher, a multi-tiered system of support, student support and instructional coach, a CST coordinator, related services coordinator, and board certified behavioral analyst. So those are not hires, they are just descriptions for those positions. So do I have approval for item 15.02 this evening? The approval of the job descriptions. And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Moving on to item 16, which is the second opportunity for public comment. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. And the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. It does not look like anyone is going to stand up, so I am going to move to section 17, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
I, oh, I just want to call out, like, some of these retirements that we're honoring. Some of these folks have been in district-
Many years of service.
-as long as I've been alive.
Yes.
Which I just think is, you know, a-
Incredible.
-dedicated service to our community. And so I just kind of wanted to personally just acknowledge that I-
I appreciate that.
...appreciate the longevity that folks have dedicated to our community and our children.
At the end of that, of reading that, I could not compute the, the years of service, so I appreciate you checking that out and really making it clear that a lot of them have been dedicated to this district for a very long time.
Miss Rice is 1981, she started here, it's, it's, that's a lot of dedication. What's that?
No, he's not giving up his age.
June 16th, 1980, thank you.
On that note, do I have a motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very mu, thank you very much, everyone.